I pulled a 14th meeting to order.
Guess I'll turn this over to, uh...
If they were to have, um... Were to have one of the computers that are writing messages on, if I'm muted?
I got mine muted.
So we're gonna be in fact...
Yeah, I'm muted, so...
You unmute? I can unmute? Is that okay?
No, still get feedback. I think the two computers are picking up because it's too close together.
Are you muted?
No, but I think you have to mute your volume.
Because it's picking up. Turn basically, I'll have to turn the sound probably right down if I want it to work out.
Okay.
That's a good, that's a good point. I'll get one muted and the sound's off.
We're gonna have to... Can't really listen though, that's the only problem.
Why don't you have Joe turn his up?
Joe, can you turn yours up? Can you turn your volume?
I'm muted, so let me...
Let me just turn it up a little bit here. See what happens.
Can you hear any next?
No.
It's muted.
Okay, but have they... We're muted, but I haven't heard them saying... Okay, no, it sounds good too. It sounds better from my perspective.
Do you hear it? Okay, Mickey, can you say something? Oops.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can you guys hear that?
Yeah.
Are we okay now?
You can hear him over there, can you?
Yeah, you might better just let them go ahead and review it, and if we got questions...
Is that wrong, thank you, Walter? Um, I think I have you make your review of things, I think.
Sure, yeah, I can share without being hosted.
I'm gonna make you hold. You have that purpose now.
Yeah, then I guess I'll leave it up to Tim or Mickey.
And you want to go back over the financial summary, or...
Yeah, why don't we do that while I'm waiting here?
There was a mail on the 9th day where you modified, yeah, just to show...
Yeah, Tim, so do you want me to, if you remember back to the 9% design meeting, do you want me to go over in full detail with both pages of the unit price cost breakout sheet, or also, or just the total project summary, that single sheet? Guess just looking at what level of detail I'm gonna go into, I don't wanna bore you in the night and the morning, or if there's any information, I can do it again, no problem.
I think just a single sheet.
Just a single, yeah.
Yeah, just a single sheet.
So I'm gonna share the one that was in the report, and then I can pull up the one that we modified for you, Tim.
Okay.
Um, so, I do have all the backup available, so like I mentioned, Tim, if, um, you know, wanna see any of those numbers, I can go to that sheet, just, uh... Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, basically, I'm gonna go over the sheet. So what this is, this is the total project summary, so this is in the 9% design report that was provided to the village. And, um, you know, that same report after that meeting's gonna be updated, turned into a final version, or ICPC, and all be in the same format moving forward. So this is great to kinda go over now. Uh, the format of this won't change, numbers may change slightly depending on, you know, what you decide to do, and things like that, but, um, in general, going over the sheet, that was a great idea. So really what this is, is a, um, high-level snapshot of the whole, of the project as a whole. And as what I was alluding to is there's some high-level numbers in here, and what I just wanna make clear is they're not, um, you know, we don't do this, this kind of lump sum, uh, numbers, there's backup and, you know, support to all of us. I'll just start at the top here. So these categories at the top are all the costs associated with the project. Construction costs, allowances, this smart city technology line, and it bonds, uh, for all of our electrical subcontractors are bonded and insured. This smart city technology line is really just a budget of, uh, an amount of money that the village could use towards smart city technology without incurring any costs, because there's a grant farther down that will cover all of that. Um, why that, the grant's $20,000 base grant, why that doesn't show $20,000 up here, is because there is some fees and contingencies taken as well. So if you spent $14,671, uh, worth of things, the village wouldn't spend any of that money to cover. If you spent $15,000, the village would have to pay a little bit in fees. So that's why that's kind of that safety budget number. I won't go through them all, but I just wanna show you again, just to show, uh, a lot of companies will just say, yeah, lump sum for this project, $1 million, and you don't really get that backup, you don't even feel great about it, in this report, and what will always be there is full backup to all that. So the next page in your report is this, uh, material cost estimate. So every line's broken out unit price based, just as just a quick example, uh, these model numbers are for a new LED light. You can see the quantity, the unit material price, the NIP, Phillips statewide contract, uh, the labor, equipment and labor price, and then through the statewide labor bid that was solicited, uh, et cetera, all the way down, so. And it's all just shows the allowances for the asset management controls, et cetera. So I'll go back to this, unless, Tim, do you think there's anything on that sheet that I can go over specifically?
No, I think you should go to the, the copy that you showed, yeah, not in there, and we'll review that one.
Oh, I'm trying to hear Tim.
I said, go over that sheet that you got up right now, and we'll review that one more in detail.
Oh, this one here?
Yeah.
I, I was just gonna point out, though, in that...
Well, not that one, the one that most current one you sent us.
Okay.
And Zach, also in the other sheet that you showed, I know there was that mobilization fee for 6500, and then that could be, most likely, the community would not be paying that full amount because it's probably more than one community going at the same time, because that would split amongst all of them, right?
Yeah, it's a great, great point, Mickey. So, yeah, before I switch over to the other sheet, just, I'll show you a couple, uh, things. So the main theme of all this is, you know, we, um, try to be as conservative as possible. Uh, and then that way, you are, you know, budgeting appropriately, you're getting that financing in place and all that for the right amount of money, and then we try to bring costs down through construction. So there's about three or four items that, um, are a little bit conservative, and Mickey brought, first one's mobilization. So again, the 6500 would be the cost if a subcontractor came just to the village, did your lights, and went home. Uh, but in actuality, if only one other community were to go to construction at the same time, this would be cut in half, three communities, a third, so you'll see significant savings there also, for that worst-case scenario. Uh, another one of those that's on this sheet is facility repair replace allowance. So that's when we get into installing your lights, if there's any damaged arms or wires, anything like that. We don't wanna put up new LEDs on damaged equipment, we're gonna give you a good system after you take, uh, over ownership at the end of the day. So that, uh, repair replace allowance is to cover those items, and what we talked about in previous meetings is that, the number's $15,483. If everything's in perfect condition, and really none of that money's used, let's say only $483 is used, that $15,000 remain, just buys down the project, goes back to the village, um, NIPA doesn't keep that as a profit or anything like that. It's really just, again, budgeting tool to help you make sure you have money set aside to, uh, get the project down the right way. It's that sheet. All right, so this is the one that, uh, Tim's talking about, so we revised it a little bit for him. Uh, all this stuff's at the top, it's the same still. Uh, I take that back, so we removed that smart city line to make that more clear, $0 there. Uh, contingency, so that's kind of the third, uh, conservative, you know, budgeting tool, so industry standard, it's 10%. Uh, allowance is taken on all the construction costs. Uh, again, that's for any unforeseen conditions, damaged arms, uh, wiring, things like that, and again, in good condition. This is $2,000, if only $2,000 were used, $20,000 goes right back to the project, buys it down, uh, again, not kept for profit. So fully transparent. Next section here is, you had to just list the whole costs, that's something that's all included in the costs, including those unit price labor costs, I showed, uh, subcontractor will take down the existing lights, move them, dispose them properly, all that, and also be disposed properly through, so it's not the village's concern, actually, maybe a pile of 390 lights in your parking lot somewhere, we'll take them home with us. And then this section here is, um, fees associated with the project, so next one is fees for audit design, construction management, project management. So again, uh, it can be as involved throughout the process as you want, or, um, kinda as hands-off as you'd like as well, all the way through construction. So LIPA handles the construction management, um, all the way through, so we've been here since the beginning, here all the way through the end, so those are the fees you're for. This section here is your, uh, all the costs associated with purchasing lights back from National Grid. Um, so that's kind of that critical path, you can't, you know, change your lights, or really do anything with them until you own them back, and that's, that ownership is really what gives you the majority of your saves, that's the cost associated with those.
Zach, could you maybe just talk a little bit, because I know there was confusion about that utility device disconnect deposit bond?
Yeah, great question. So let me pull up your sheet here. So if we look at, uh, if you're familiar with this sheet that I pulled up on my screen, this is the proposal letter from National Grid, um, for your buyback. See, your proposed estimated purchase price at the net book value is this $69,000. You'll see this giant number here is $180,000, is the disconnected by security. So, uh, if you like to move forward, with buying the lights back, you'll sign a thing called the, um, pole attachment agreement. Basically, that's just the terms and conditions moving forward, uh, to have your lights, uh, National Grid wood poles, and owning the lights. Uh, what it says in there is that you need to install these, uh, disconnects, they're fusible disconnects, and basically, it just goes in line, it's a twist-lock fuse. What that does is it, uh, you know, really gives a point of demarcation between the village's assets and then National Grid's, so that you can't backcharge through and damage something on, uh, National Grid's, vice versa. It also, uh, helps for safety reasons, so if a pole door get knocked down, or lightning strikes, something along those lines, where you need to work that, uh, you could easily just de-energize that fixture, and so some work out safely. So that's the purpose of, what this number is, is National Grid's saying, okay, if you wanna buy these back, you have to install those. Uh, if you don't install those in 24 months, uh, we'll use this money, uh, $180,000, and we'll do it ourselves, National Grid. Uh, so what you can do, and what this does is do is get a letter of credit for that amount of money, a bond, and that is this amount here, utility device disconnect deposit bond. So that's just the cost associated with getting that letter of credit, basically, you know, the bank's putting up that money, if you didn't do that work in 24 months, they paid $180,000. So that's why $180,000 isn't shown here, and then again, this $5,400 is a conservative number, and it's just based on 3% of that, um, total, uh, disconnect amount. And that's kind of what we've seen, but we've seen lower than that as well, so that could be lower once you actually go out for that. And again, all of that can be financed through NIPA through the Power Authority, so they pay all that upfront, so you wouldn't have to pay that upfront, Power Authority would. Does that, uh, Mickey answer all that?
Yeah, and then just, uh, just to reconfirm, those, uh, device disconnects are already part of this project, so they're gonna go in... So the, the community won't be paying $180,000 no matter what anyways, because they're gonna, the device disconnects are already part of that project.
Yeah, great point, and that's this line here, it's fuse one, they're, you know, about a little over $30 fuse, and, uh, costs associated with installing those is, is included. So next down here, we have, uh, interest and construction. So by financing through the Power Authority, uh, you can accrue interest, and this is, again, this is that kind of fourth, real conservative budgeted item. So this is, this interest is calculated using a, uh, conservative 4% interest rate, but it's also based on 12-month construction period. So it's saying that you're starting to incur interest from the day, you know, you ordered a little bit of lights, and get started. It's much more likely with your number of lights, it'll only take a couple of months. So, again, you know, let's say it takes three months, construction ends, you start your, you know, you start to pay back Power Authority, uh, you'll get a final version of this, uh, and this number would be reduced significantly, so instead of based on 12 months, it'd be based on the three actual months that construction took place, so this would be lowered as well. But again, we've got a budget conservatively, and for that worst-case scenario. Moving down, this section here is all your savings. Um, so we'll get into that too much unless you have any questions on it, but on the left here, we have, uh, total energy savings, so that's, um, your existing lights are HIDs, they're using much more power than LEDs by converting. Energy savings allows to save money here, and through utility rate change. Ownership savings, so that's the, the largest portion of savings, and where that comes from is by taking over ownership of the lights, I no longer have to pay any of the, uh, facility charges to, uh, National Grid. And actually, I'm gonna show you the backup to that one really quick, just because that's such a large number. I'm gonna do that really quick. So, this sheet here that's in your report, um, is how the facility maintenance charges are calculated. So the way, uh, the village is built now, under service class 2, which is, uh, utility-owned, utility-maintained, you're charged, uh, for every component that makes it through the lighting system. So for all the lamps, uh, the luminaires, just the light housing itself, circuits, um, some poles, uh, you're charged a flat monthly fee, we showed here annually. So just for having a lamp, a screw-in lamp up there, uh, it's $8, um, some of the lights are $56, et cetera. Uh, so under blue would be your proposed case, if you bought the lights back, and you go to service class 3, which is village-owned, village-maintained, those go to zero. So that's, you get instant savings a day you buy those lights back. And then at the bottom here, we have two items to help us make sure we're not overstating your savings, and that's the, uh, the cost moving forward. So if we just looked at all these ones at the top, it's just savings, and then these two lines at the bottom are for your cost moving forward. So the first one is utility-owned pole attachment charge. So by having your lights hooked to National Grid wood utility poles, there's a, basically a rental fee, and that's $7.20, $7.20 a year, it's very nominal. If you look just the lamp, that's up there now, costing $8, let alone the $56 for the light itself. So we've got that, shows a penalty, and then also your, uh, since National Grid won't be doing that maintenance, if you go through this program, uh, you're eligible for participating in NIPA OANM operation maintenance program. And so your maintenance cost moving forward would be just shy of, uh, $20 per light per year, uh, for standard maintenance, there's other, you know, potential costs for, like, emergency, something like that.
Can I ask a question on that maintenance?
Yes.
Is that maintenance just for, like, coming in and replacing the light when it goes out, or say we had an ice storm, and it took down a bunch of National Grid poles, and they had to come put the poles back up and the wires, uh, does that include, uh, coming back and, and replacing the arms and luminaries?
That's a great question. So, uh, the $20 per light per year is standard maintenance items, uh, it's really how budget for the maintenance to go forward. The maintenance program itself, you know, as you get further in the process, Power Authority can give you a, uh, presentation on what's all included in there, the different tiers of rates and things like that. To your example, if an ice storm came through and a bunch of the wood poles got knocked down, uh, fortunately, the majority of your lights are on wood utility poles, so any damage to those, National Grid is responsible for. So they'll put the pole back up, fix the power, all that, but if your light happened to fall off, uh, they'll just set it aside, they'll set it next to the pole. And then that's when you would use the NIPA maintenance program, uh, subcontractor, they would go up and put the light back up. Uh, and if it was done in a, uh, more routine way, so if you, you know, waited, if you didn't deem it kind of emergency, you needed that light up, like, if it wasn't at an intersection, just a residential street, it would most likely fall on that $20, but if there was something you needed done, uh, trying to think of the tiers of the maintenance program, but I think it's just, you know, more like an emergency item, it may cost more, uh, you know. But if they can wait, kind of bundle a couple together, that's nice.
You're right, Zach. Uh, there are, uh, a few, two, there are three levels of service. There's a, you know, basic service, $20, uh, fixture, if fixture goes out, uh, then, uh, et cetera, money will notify, NIPA notifies, uh, get notification through those, uh, smart nodes on the top, and they have a contractor who is going to come and replace the fixture. Uh, if something, uh, happens, uh, during hurricane, and, uh, lights are not down, or whatever, there is a damage, uh, to attachment or something, this is a, there's another category, so this is kind of special service. So that one will be, uh, charged, uh, depending on how much damage, or how much estimated, uh, damage, uh, there is. Uh, we can find out more, uh, information from Kevin. Uh, they, uh, he was part of this program, but $20 is for basic service, to replace a light.
Which is what would be more typical. Great, thanks a lot. Back at this, so, again, I just wanna show you the backup of how, you know, that was such a significant savings, number of $31,000, that's where that comes from. Uh, and then that gives you your estimated total savings. Just one thing to point out, uh, this one says $31,000, if you look back at that sheet, it shows a little less, because those penalties were included there. Those are just included a little farther down on this sheet. Um, but before we get to that, so now this middle is your simple payback. So we have your total project cost with, uh, interest and construction, it's $405,000. Uh, the grant was removed, uh, except for requested, and then, just to make things a little easier to see, and then, uh, this DOS-LGE asset management grant, so what that is for is, um, uh, thanks to Village West Carthage, and through Rayco, and Tuck Hill, the, um, asset management notes, which are, if you want to hear, if you can see my camera or not, but, uh, one of these will be installed on top of each one of the lights, and that allows you to control them, get outage reports, it allows you to dim them if you wanted, but it also makes you eligible for that NIPA operation maintenance program, uh, reason being, that node, if it, um, communicates back every couple minutes, if it loses power, or if it's getting a weird power reading, it'll send a notification to the maintenance subcontractor and say, something's wrong, you know, I need you to come, take a look at it. So that's, that's what lets you be eligible for that. Fortunately, that, uh, grant covers the majority of the costs associated with those. Uh, and then this line here is the National Grid rebate and incentives, so by converting LEDs, you're actually eligible for, uh, National Grid rebates as well. So that reduces your total project cost, you know, again, including all those conservative, uh, estimates, and it brings you, uh, 330, 3,000, 330,000, I should say.
And Zach, this is Mickey, um, back to, like, up where it said the estimated ownership savings that you just went through. I know it showed, like, the $21,000 because it subtracted out, you know, what you'd have to pay for the, yeah, right there, subtracted those out there. But that $21,000 is a savings that you only get if you own your lights, it's not a saving you get through National Grid, that's one of the differences, you're, you're getting that higher savings because, um, that's available through owning your own lights compared to if you switch with National Grid, you're only gonna get an, and a few savings, and that's it.
That's a good point. We can, I can show, I've got a little table that might help make that a little more clear. But just, uh, your point, Mickey, it's, it's a great point, so if you weren't to convert to National Grid, I'm sorry, if you weren't to convert to service class 3 and own the lights yourselves, if you were to stay with National Grid, these charges would actually go up, they wouldn't go down. So you would still have charges, flat charges, and they would go up because there would be four LED lights, and I can show you that in a second.
And that was something too, that, uh, when we had National Grid come speak to the Rayco group, they did say that their maintenance, their facility charges go up, um, when they put, after they put LED lighting in, so actually, the, your total energy savings actually was down some because your, your facility charges go up.
Great. Okay. So we have your net project cost, your net annual savings, so that's, again, your total savings, energy, ownership, uh, those two kind of penalties removed, your utility fees moving forward, and your maintenance moving forward, your net estimated annual savings, and then we have your simple payback. So what the simple payback is, is just your net project cost divided by your net annual savings, and it's basically saying, in eight and a half years, um, you've paid off all the costs associated with the project, and every day, year after that, essentially, um, all of these savings would just be, you know, would just be accruing. And then this box at the bottom here is, again, another high-level look at, uh, so again, if you were to finance through the Power Authority, uh, this is what it would look like. So we have your total amount financed, and again, one thing to point out, uh, this sheet's been modified, uh, to help, kind of for demonstration purposes. In the actual, um, report, uh, the grants are not applied to this amount, uh, because the DOS-LGE grant may come further down in construction, and same with the rebates, they come after construction. So we need to have the money financed, the total amount financed upfront, and then the grants buy that down. Uh, but that's obviously what the village is doing with the money, so you can show it that way here, so for demonstration purposes, the grants have been removed, so again, you're still at that net project cost without, with the grants removed. And with, uh, uh, a 3% interest rate shown, which is more realistic, and so that gets you down to, uh, if you finance for 10 years, which is 120 months payments, uh, still gives you positive cash flow, and so your payback of financing is, uh, just shy of 10 years, 9.86 years. So if you, um, finance for longer, uh, just like buying a car, if you finance for 10 years, then your cash flow, positive cash flow would be greater. Uh, we just see it's typical that most municipalities wanna keep their year's finance as low as possible, while still maintaining a slight positive cash flow, or to can't pay that off faster, then that way, you're just getting all those savings from that point on. Uh, one question we get is, you know, well, how long can you really estimate those for? The life of the new LEDs, uh, that you're putting in, they have a 10-year warranty, but they're rated to last 20 to 25 years. So essentially, you could look at those savings, so after 10 years, you've got another 10 to 15 years of just, you know, accruing all those savings, budgeting a little bit aside to replace the lights in, you know, 15, 16 years from there, so that's a really good financial picture here.
So basically, right now, if they financed it, they would have a savings of $550 while they're paying off the loan each year, so that they won't be basically taking on any expense. And then after that is, you know, paid off in that 10 years, then, then often, then we get that full, you know, almost $39,000 there in total, total savings. That will definitely come into them once it's paid off, basically. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a great, great point.
Let me just mention that, uh, total amount financed, $33,000 is, uh, is just to show you for reference, if, uh, uh, the grants, $54,000 and the rebate, $20,000, is put toward financing. Uh, a standard way to show it on final documents, if we finance fully $400, uh, $400,000, yes, this, and they use 4% interest rate, as a, this is a standard for NIPA. Uh, because the money which you get, uh, grant and rebate goes directly to the town, NIPA doesn't, doesn't receive it, so that grant is going directly to the town. Usually, the, our final documents will be in this, this form.
So, so what, yeah, so what really is saying, um, is that this is the document you would receive, because with the grant, yeah, with the grant money and the National Grid rebates and incentives, that money goes directly to the village, the village couldn't buy back down that loan, which then would give you, like, what you're seeing in that second quote that was up here. But the village could also decide to take that money and use it somewhere else, so that's why they don't include it in that total amount financed, because they don't know what you're gonna do with that money once you get it, whether you're gonna go and use it to buy down your loan, or if you're gonna use it for something else. So that's, I think what really is saying is this is the official doc, or not this one, that official document you're...
Correct, the higher number of difference.
Yeah, that's them. You're gonna have the grant, or the National Grid rebates and incentives taken out of that, because that's, that's something later, that you would, uh, come right directly to the village, and then it's up to the village to decide where they want to put that money. So that's, uh, I think what he's trying to get at, and, and also, the National Grid rebates and incentives, those, we won't know until the project's completed, as far as what money is left over in there, too. So, because there's a pool of money, and then once it's used up, then it's, then it's gone, um, from what I understand, so, is that correct?
Yes, but basically, since we can't guarantee those two, you know, can't guarantee that NIPA will receive these, these dollars, we just have to finance for the whole amount. And then, but Tim had a good point, you know, asked if we could show it, you know, obviously, the village, most likely, would use that amount to buy that, that down. So that's why this version showing here shows that lower amount for kind of, you know, uh, demonstration purposes. Well, you could even do, some municipalities have some money set aside, uh, I know most don't, and right now is a really hard time for everybody, but some, you could even buy down this at any time. I know most don't, and right now is a really hard time for everybody, but some, you could even buy down this at any time too. There's really no penalty in, or there is no penalty, I should say, in paying this off early. So, you know, it's just a, it's a good way to finance a project through the Power Authority, they'll pay everything upfront, finance this larger amount. And then as you get these grant funds in, you could give them to NIPA, it would buy it down, lower your interest. And then if you had any other money set aside, you could, you know, buy that down also.
And I did want to point out too, in the LGE asset management grant, it says $54,000 there. I believe it's a little bit less, I don't know. Carl, do you have the number that we submitted for Lavo? Because basically, this was based upon the number of lights you had, but this is actually that, not that dollar figure, right? Oh, is that?
Yeah, exactly. Yep, the, in this example, when we're showing.
You showed the exact, okay, perfect. So that, that is the exact amount then, that we submitted in the grant for then, what's actually showing there by the sound. So it's the $54,770. The reason the other quote, if you want to jump back, was $58,000 is because you had those spare nodes and light fixtures in there. So that was, that increase basically counted as extra lights that we did not originally put in for the grant. So that's why the original number showed 58. So this one is the accurate number here, $54,770. So that's good. So that, that's what we have the grant for. So that money you already basically have. We know that for sure.
Can we just add a little, one thing? Last box for project financing, as a standard, we use 4% as very conservative. Real interest rate probably would be below 3%. Because the interest rate is every year, I think in January, it's based on the current interest rate, you determine which one to charge. I think now it's like 2.7. And it's possible that next year it's going to be, in January, it's going to be even lower now. So we just use it conservatively in final documents, 4%, but it's going to be much lower. And the village has a choice, they can pull money from the bank at the lowest percent they can find and pay for the project. And you're just going to pay it to the bank at lower interest if you can find.
And, and I notice, oh, sorry, did I, you're good?
Ignore, no problem.
Oh, I was just going to say, and Elia too, I mean, if a community keeps moving forward with this project, they still have the option to basically back out just before they sign the final agreement with NIPA, which would be just before construction is going to take place. If, say, something changed, say also the interest rate came back higher or something like that and the dollar figures didn't match up, they would have the ability to still opt out right up until they sign the final documents. Is that correct with NIPA?
Yeah, until you fully, until you sign the final documents. When you sign the CPC, that's, you can, I think you can, I'm not sure. You can back out of the project, you just have to pay certain fees like F for design and all those combinations. So I think it's a 50% of, of project management fee. So the 50% of Wendell and 50% from NIPA. But you, you, you own the design and this document, so whatever you need it for, maybe if you decide in the future.
Right, but that was something I know that NIPA made clear right up front too, is that, you know, if a community did opt out, they would have to pay the design cost. Otherwise, that design cost is rolled into your total amount financed here that you're seeing right now.
It's, it's good to decide before the final CPC is signed. When, when we prepare final documents, it first goes to NIPA. NIPA reviews it and checks it and signs it. So it probably takes, I don't know, my mom.
Right.
And then it goes to the, then it goes to the town.
And it is going to know, so you kind of know how many communities you have moving forward. Because then, you know, I think every community kind of wants to know what each other is doing too. So, so yeah, it probably is good to at least know whether a community is serious about moving forward.
Okay. Tim, did you have any other questions or anything else you want to look at on this total project summary? Because if not, I do want to, thing I can show you, just basically your question from last time we talked about the National Grid. I should have another little summary to show the comparison between the two. But just.
I got, I got a question on the project financing. Where it says annual debt service to New York Power Authority. Is that a firm figure? And that would be, that would be our debt service to New York Power Authority? Then we'd have basically to National Grid, basically the, just our power usage, right?
Correct, yeah. So the debt service to the Power Authority, that's just for all these construction costs, all the costs associated with the project. Your cost moving forward, so the only one going to National Grid would be this $2,664. That's your rental to use your poles moving forward. And then the energy costs, that's not included in here. This is just the amount to pay off the amount financed.
Hope this, Mickey, I think also it's important to point out that the annual debt service to NIPA, it says $38,300. Then you see the total annual savings right below it, that's $38,853. That's already factored in when you're going to be paying for the NIPA program, the utility fees. That's what, that's how come, you're basically taking your savings and you're using that to pay off yearly that, that annual debt service to NIPA, which then gives you that $550 in savings here down below in annual cash flow. Because that's the difference between those two numbers.
Great. Any other questions on this sheet? No, I just, just to show you real quick, so a couple of questions were asked about the National Grid conversion. So I won't go over this sheet, it's, I've got a lot of information on it. But Tim, if you're just familiar with this one, I was sent over, you know, last time we met. This is all the back documentation from, I'll just show. But what this is, is really just trying to compare if you were to go, convert to National Grid, what your costs would be moving forward with if you were to buy back and convert. So a simpler version, maybe really quick. So this column here is your current costs. So you're currently paying National Grid, almost $26,000 just for the energy. Very $2.5 thousand for those facility maintenance charges. So total annual charges is around $58,000. And I know sometimes you pay a little more, sometimes a little less, but that's about the average, $58,000. This next column here would be if you were to convert with National Grid. So your annual energy charges would drop. So there is, there would be LEDs, so there would see energy savings. However, your annual facility maintenance charges would go up. So your total annual charges, you'd still see a little bit of savings. So your savings would be $7,000 to go that route. And then if you were to buy back the lights yourselves and then convert under this program, your energy savings are much greater because you can, a little more flexibility, you can actually convert more lights. And then your annual facility maintenance charges would drop significantly. So this $10,000 includes that, you know, cost of the NIPA O&amp;M program and then that rental fees. And so your actually, your total annual charges dropped to $18.6 thousand. So your total annual savings is 30, almost $40,000, so in comparison, much greater. And then just one other way to look at it, you know, F, again, without taking out financing and all that into account, just a simple look, you know, 25 years, that max life of those lights, if you were to convert under National Grid, be about $180,000 in savings. But if you were to buy back and convert yourselves, it would be close to a million dollars in savings. So just another way to look at it. So really, the very simplest way to put it, the National Grid approach is the lowest upfront cost, but also the lowest savings possible. The buyback and conversion has a higher upfront cost, but significantly more savings for the village. So just a quick summary there. And that's about all I have. So, you know, any other questions to Village? Anything else you want to go over in particular, anything you want to talk about?
Let me just mention, I'm going to send a form, so if, just when you sign, the NIPA will go into next step CPC. And we'll prepare final documents. It's on page four, it's a standard process. So when you, when you decide to know this number, you'll sign. Just if you make a decision to go ahead.
So anything else you wanted to go, that we didn't cover yet today? Or any questions, Village or Cameron, like?
I'm good.
I'm good, do you have any?
They can't hear me, but yeah, I'm good.
I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay. Mickey or Carl, was there anything you wanted to go over?
No, I think I'm good. Do you want to transfer then the host back to me? And then Mickey just click right next to my name and say Nate Hoster.
I guess, I do have one quick question. I'll look at all these numbers, it looks like, basically, if we were to convert and own our own lights, that basically we, for the first eight to nine years, we'd be paying roughly what we're paying right now for streetlights that we don't own. It's, it's not going to change, it's going to be roughly that same amount of a thing, cool, no matter. If I'm looking at it right?
Yeah, just with the, because you're paying off that debt service. So you're using those savings, so you are saving, but you're using those savings to pay off the debt service without having to actually pay any more money. The way you could change is if you did a longer term of financing, then you would be paying less. Could have taken longer to pay it back, but you'd have more of a positive cash flow. So it's kind of most aggressive approach is to use your years financed to kind of match with your savings essentially. So you're paying the same, the payoff sooner. But to your question, yes, it would be about the same, knowing that once your debt service is over with, it's just all savings.
Okay, that's all I have.
Good to go, I got it.
Guess we're all good on this end, Mickey?
All right, you're muted, Mickey.
Thank you.
If I stop sharing, I can see everybody else.
You can see my mouth moving. Forgot to put my video on, I forgot to leave my. All right, so you all said, I can have the meeting then if.
Thank you, guys.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So what does everybody think? Do you want to make a motion and go forward with it, or how do you want to?
Yeah, if you want to do it now, or, you know, this meeting was just to review it. I mean, we could do it next week too, I guess.
We're going to have a meeting Wednesday, you want, we're going to pull forward and make the decision then?
Yeah, I mean, I talked to Dan about it and he reviewed everything and it looked good to him too, so. That was very informative, I think, I mean, kind of, that's kind of what me and Joe was seeing way back when, what's her name, Jennifer there, was it Jennifer? This whole thing first started, the numbers were different, but it's kind of.
Jessica, was it?
Jessica. But until they get right into the nitty gritty and explain it, it's kind of hard to understand. But basically, it's like the last question you asked, we're going to be paying about what we're going to be paying right now through National Grid. I was way a little bit lost because there were issues probably a lot for maybe 10 years.
We're paying roughly $58,000 now. So if we can end up owning them for, say, $58,000 for the first eight, nine years, then we'll drop down to, we'll probably be paying $20,000 for our electric.
The financing for 10 years, the total cost is like $400,000. That was last those grants coming in too, which we could do whatever we wanted with that money.
Yeah, like he says, we could take the grant money if we wanted.
That's $70,000.
And pay down on the loans.
Right. But, well, he was showing that last spreadsheet that he showed with the difference between the savings being $180,000 conversion to National Grid in 25 years, almost a million. So even after we pay the $400,000 off, we're still up $600,000 in 25 years. And I, we've got to do a light replacement. Plus we'll have better lighting.
What he didn't, what he didn't say there when he was talking about the, maybe Charlie doesn't know, the O&amp;M, the maintenance for the program.
That's the question I had.
They, they expect that possibly increase like 3% each year. And supposedly, New York Power Authority is the one that goes out and deals with that contract for all the municipalities that's involved.
But they have a, that $20 figure, is that per fixture per year, right?
Yes, yeah.
There's $7.20 charge that has to go back to National Grids for lease of the pole. And then the $20 is the maintenance charge per pole per year.
But my, my question is, if, if they're warranted for 10 years, what do you, what's the $20 charge?
Well, they said that that cost could go down with the law, right?
Yeah.
The service. I would assume, it's like you said, and that's another question to ask maybe next time around, because we can get out of this right until the end, basically. But that might be another question to ask, what if, in the first five years, are you going to have any maintenance? You know, you may not.
Well, actually, I think the actual LED, by rights, is guaranteed for 20, isn't it? But they, they're using the 10-year life. I think the big part with the maintenance, the bulb might be under warranty, but it's to have the crew come out here and change it, say if it goes bad.
I understand that part, but still, it just sounds like 20 bucks for each one per year. Sounds like a lot of money when they're warranted.
The lights themselves, like you said, are not the labor cost on it. So yeah, that's another question to ask, I guess, and I can, we can email them and ask that question too, you know. Copy everyone.
That's fine. Yeah, just a little, little stuff, but a little stuff adds up.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, that maintenance cost, what, $7,000? 10 years is $70,000, right?
All right, any other questions?
I'm good.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?